Well, I'd like to call this workshop to order. Thank you, everyone, for taking time to listen to us today and share your thoughts with our project. Our intention for the board, the JPA Board and the Reservoir Committee Board, is to give out some current information on the project. We've had some recent changes here. We'd like everyone to understand how we perceive it to go forward at this day. We also would like to get an input from project participants, maybe board members for some of the participants, and also from folks in the environmental community and also the general public. So, we're going to be recording this meeting, and there will be minutes afterward that will be available on our website. And I'd ask that everyone go on to mute while you're not talking. It makes the call work much, much better. Well, I'd like to say that we've been working really diligently here in the past nine months to meet the current needs of this project and also to make it affordable. We've been listening to the landowners and the investors, and this resulted in what we call a right sizing the project, whereby we matched the supply of the reservoir to the current demand. Sykes is a project for all of our communities and the environment, and our strength is in our participants. We have participants from the Sacramento Valley, from the San Joaquin Valley, the Bay Area, and Southern California as well. And this is a unique opportunity here, generational opportunity, because this will be a multi-benefit storage project. Well, we hope it provides reliable, flexible, and resilient supply of water for the environment. And we've recently gone about an organizational assessment. We did that last fall, and we had a look at what the, all the participants, the thoughts on the project, direction, and how to move forward. And thus, we came up with the concept of right sizing the project. We put those, somebody needs to go on mute. We took those comments and we took them to value planning, and we've made some great changes here in terms for the project. In addition, we also looked at leadership, and we felt that what we needed for the next phase was someone with strengths in communication. And we've brought onboard Jerry Brown, former General Manager of the Contra Costa Water District. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jerry and let Jerry tell us a little bit about the overview.
All right. Thanks, Fritz, and thank you again for everyone being able to join us today. This is a really important information session that is intended to provide you with information about the project. We've got quite a bit of updates to go through, and the way we wanted to organize this was to just have a relatively brief slide deck run through here. And then, after the slide deck, introduce our panelists and have an open question and answer session with all the participants. So, we'll get into the logistics of that after going through the slide deck and allow for everyone to participate. So, as we do this, I would suggest you make notes of your comments and bring them up when we get to that point. So, as Fritz mentioned, I recently joined the project as the Executive Director about three months ago. I am working for the Sykes Project Authority, which is a joint powers authority of water agencies and irrigation districts from throughout the state. I joined the project largely because I see such great potential in the Sykes Reservoir Project. I've got some experience in developing water storage project with Contra Costa and just have a real passion for developing storage within the state and developing multi-benefit storage, environmental benefits, water supply benefits, flood control, recreation. These are the kind of things that we need to provide with major infrastructure projects as we go forward for them to be successful for everyone in the state. And so, I would like to start with our first slide and just remind everyone that the Sykes Reservoir is an off-stream facility that's located in the northwest of the Sacramento Valley. We are a 21st century solution that is aiming to meet the reliability challenges for the state. Significant flexibility can be created by the Sykes Reservoir Project in both the federal and state water system. But importantly, for the participating members, and I'll get into that in a little bit further later, Sykes provides significant resiliency for climate change. The project actually performs better under the toughest climate change scenarios. So, this, in combination with the flexibility and reliability, really makes this a rare, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to create something of this value and significance for the long-term future. We are a project that takes stormwater flows from the Sacramento River after all other water rights and regulatory requirements are met and stores that water for release primarily in the dry and critically dry years for environmental uses and for uses in communities, farms, and businesses throughout the state. One of the strengths of our project is the statewide participation that we have. And this slide lists the participating agencies that are all providing a share of the local funding for the project. This is a local-led project. These districts are varied in terms of their service they provide, both agriculture and municipal and industrial, but also diverse in terms of where they're located throughout the state, Sacramento Valley, Bay Area, San Joaquin, and the Southern Californians. We have 28 participating agencies in the Sykes Reservoir Project, and together, they serve a total of about 24 million people and more than 500,000 acres of farmland. The project recently went through a value planning exercise based on the input and comments that we had received from prior public review processes, the draft DIR in 2017, the 2018 Water Supply Investment Program, WISIP Prop 1 analysis that the state did. All of those gave us an opportunity to get feedback from other stakeholders throughout the state. And that, together with the feedback and interests of our investment partners, we'd stopped about a year ago and said, "Let's take a look at this project and see what we can do to make this more affordable, more certain in terms of its permitting capabilities, and buildable within a reasonable timeframe." And what came out of that recently, the last three months, was what we're calling a right-sized project. And essentially, the right-sized project has three primaries of change from the prior definition of the project, if you will. First, the project reservoir was reduced from 1.8 million acre feet to 1.5 million acre feet. And with this smaller footprint, there's, of course, reduced cost, but also reduced impacts on environment and new opportunities to benefit key natural resources, still keeping a significant amount of flexibility to manage the project for the greatest overall benefit. Number two, we eliminated a major conveyance addition that was proposed. It was called the Delavan Pipeline. And it was fairly controversial, as it was reflected in the comments that were received. So, in its elimination, we improve our permitability and the ability to get this built within a reasonable time. We also addressed the affordability issue for sure, because it was a major cost element of the original project. But instead, we are now relying on the existing Glen Calusa Irrigation District and Tohima Calusa Canal Authority canals to move water between the Sykes Reservoir and the Sacramento River. And third, we eliminated a pump-back storage energy generation system, which, when we looked at the costs and benefits, it just did not make a business case within the context of that facility as an individual component of the project. And so, again, to address affordability concerns, that has been eliminated from the project. It's not that it couldn't be added in the future, but for right now, with the conditions that we have, it just doesn't pencil out. So, when you make all of these changes to the facilities, it does affect the output of the project. And so, the overall output originally was projected to be close to 500,000 acre feet of new water supplies. With the reconfigured and right-sized project, we are now closer to about 230,000 acre feet. And the table in the upper left of this slide illustrates the distribution of those benefits to the various investor groups within the project. You will know, north of Delta is about a quarter of the total water supplies, south of Delta, about 75%. And then, we have a placeholder there for the state of California to represent the environmental benefits that are provided under the public benefits for the Prop 1 WISIP process. In the lower right, you can see that the deliveries from the project through releases are substantially greater in the drier years. And this is intended to just illustrate and quantify what the amount of those benefits look like. You can see substantial beneficial new water supplies that are generated and produced for users and the water system in those dry and critical years, which is super important as we go forward in a climate change condition. So, we believe we have a better project today than we did last year. Certainly reflects the input of participants, NGOs, landowners, and other stakeholders like regulatory agencies and elected officials. And the changes that we made were substantial enough to where we are going to be revising and recirculating our environmental analysis, and we expect that to occur by about this time next year. And while that lengthens our overall timeline to deliver the project, we think that it is an important piece to demonstrate and demonstrate our responsiveness to the input that we receive, but also seek to get any other input that folks might have to improve the project. This table that's shown is reflecting the cost reduction primarily in the project. Through those changes that I mentioned, plus some other things in the right sizing and value planning process, we were able to eliminate about $2 billion of project costs. So, when you look at that in unit cost, we are, we've now been able to get the project down into a range of $600 to $700 an acre foot. The variance there is dependent on the federal loans, the WIFTIA loans, that whether we assume we receive that or not. But $600 to $700 an acre foot is certainly in an affordable range for our participants and definitely makes the project more affordable, buildable, within a reasonable timeframe. The project is really, I mean, it's probably one of the single most important elements of it is that it has this multi-benefit way about it. And the multi-benefits are significant. It's an off-stream reservoir, so we're not building any new dams and we're not blocking any native fish migration. We're providing flexibility for state and federal water agencies to manage for their purposes, which are badly needed in our system today and will continue to grow as we go forward. We're ready for climate change. The modeling suggests that the improvement in the dry years in the future will be significant and will provide great flexibility for the system. We have really important recreational and flood control benefits for the local area, but also for those visiting the area. And then, we have numerous benefits as far as environment go and the flexibility that this asset creates for environmental uses, which, under the Prop 1 process, will be managed by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They will, in essence, be one of the other investors in the project that'll be sitting around the table, deciding on their use of their asset every year, just like any of the other investors. It's really a unique opportunity and one that we're really excited for and look forward to and, you know, are wanting to make sure that our state investors are of equal stature and standing to our other local investors. So, we still have a lot of work to do, but we're on track to move this project forward and deliver on a reasonable timeframe. Most of our work over the next 18 months is geared towards completing the deliverables for the Prop 1 deadlines. In addition, we have to provide information to our project participants, our local participants, in order for them to make funding decisions. And we need to advance project elements to address those uncertainties. So, that's what you see reflected mostly on this slide. Beyond the next 18 months, we are programming in to start construction in 2023 and have the facility into operation by 2030. We are looking forward to a busy year ahead, and we have some aggressive timelines, but we're very optimistic and very confident that we're on the right path and very excited about the right sizing and the new direction that the project is headed. And our member agencies and the environment are really the key beneficiaries here, but I've mentioned the others as well. And all in all, it's a great new direction for the project and really puts us in a position where we can move forward expeditiously, which is what our state needs so badly as it relates to this and other storage facilities. So, I'm going, that concludes my remarks. And right now, I'd like to turn it over to Sarah Katz to facilitate our discussion and walk you through the other introductions and give you the logistics so we can carry on a good exchange here for the rest of our time. Sarah?
Thank you so much, Jerry. And again, Fritz, thank you so much as the Chair of our Sykes JPA Board. Today, we're very fortunate to have a resource panel that is comprised of both board members as well as Sykes service agents, and they're extremely well-versed in each of the subject areas. And so, we encourage you, as they are doing their introductions, to please think about questions you may want to advance and go ahead and do so in the chatroom. We have received some questions that were pre-submitted, and we have cataloged them into certain categories to help facilitate the discussion, and that will help ensure that the resource member is on deck and ready once we see your question in the chatroom. So, with no further ado, you've already heard from both Jerry Brown as our Executive Director and Fritz Durst as our Authority Board Chair. And so, I'd like to ask Jeff Sutton to begin the introductions and have each of the resource panel members follow thereafter.
Thank you, Sarah. Jeff Sutton here. I serve as the Vice Chairman of the Sykes Authority Board of Directors. I represent on the Sykes JPA the Tamecalusa Canal Authority, where I serve as its General Manager. We also have six of the 17 districts served by the Tamecalusa Canal Authority that are investors in the Sykes Project. And also, our infrastructure, our diversion and conveyance infrastructure is intimately involved in the operation of the project.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Thad Bettner. I am the Chair of the Reservoir Committee. We are a subcommittee of the Board focused on meeting project construction and addressing project viability. I'm also the General Manager of Glen Calusa Irrigation District.
Jeff Davis. I am the Vice Chair of the Sykes Reservoir Committee. I'm also the recently retired General Manager of the San Gregorio Pass Water Agency in Riverside County in Southern California. And I'm here today to help answer questions on the benefits of Sykes Reservoir to Southern California and areas of the state outside the Sacramento Valley.
Good afternoon. I'm Ally Forsyte. I'm the Environmental Planning and Permitting Manager for Sykes Reservoir, and I lead our Planning, Permitting, and Water Operations components.
Kevin Spessert. I am the Real Estate and External Affairs Manager for the Sykes Project Authority. I handle all the real estate and land management activities for the project and then all the community outreach, landowner outreach, local agency outreach, as well as government affairs.
Hello, I'm JP Robinett. I'm really excited to be here today. I serve as the Project Controls Lead for the Sykes Project. I support site staff in managing the project's contracts and agreements, the schedule, and the project's funding.
Such a great lineup of expertise and participants and investors. Again, we encourage individuals to begin to submit questions in the chatroom. There are also other ways to participate. I mentioned that we have received some pre-submitted questions, which we have collapsed into some categories to help facilitate the discussion today. You can also participate via WebEx by simply typing in the chat bar either your question specifically, or that you do have a question and then you will be called upon. In your invite link, there was the ability to participate by phone, so we welcome that kind of engagement as well. And then, finally, socially distant and certainly compliant with state directives. We do have our Sykes office open in Maxwell, where we have Kevin Spessert hosting some of our board members, as well as any members of the public that have decided to participate in person. As we look ahead, there are some ground rules that we would like to ask everybody to please consider and observe. First, please remain on mute unless you are called upon or you have asked to speak. It just clearly helps facilitate a more productive conversation. When you are called upon, please introduce yourself with your name, if you are affiliated with an organization or an NGO. And if it's Jermaine, please tell us where you are located in the state. We would also ask to please respect the volume of questions that are asked. If you have a portfolio of questions, please ask them in a judicious manner, given the ability for others to still participate as well. They will be answered in the order that is received. And if, in fact, we get repeat questions, we will do our best to consolidate so we're not answering a very similar question several times. And finally, as Fritz mentioned at the beginning, the meeting will be recorded, and it will be posted later this week or early next week on our website. So, with that, if we could look at the discussion categories. So, again, I mentioned that we had some pre-submitted questions, and in looking at them, they seem to fall into about one of these seven categories. This certainly is not an exclusive lineup, and if you have questions that don't fit into these categories, we look forward to those, as well as any general discussion. But for the purposes of getting this Q and A going, I'll go ahead and begin with some of the questions received under the category of value planning. And to address these questions, I'd like both Thad Bettner from the Reservoir Committee, as well as Executive Director Jerry Brown, to be available to do so. Thad, will there be continued opportunities to refine or optimize the project that you are now defining as value planning? And part two of that is, how has this new right-sized project changed the project construction or perhaps any operational impacts?
Sure. Thanks, Sarah, for those. Yeah, so the first one, I think, really speaks to process and I would say even public process. You know, we, the Authority, really took over this project from DWR, who'd been working on this project for decades. And I think as we looked at it, we really saw that, while DWR looked at it more of a statewide project or something that was attributable to part of the statewide state water project, we saw more from the standpoint of a local perspective of, you know, Sykes Reservoir is in our backyard, and how can we start to look at the project that really also takes into account some of the local interests? And I think that includes, you know, surrounding landowners, counties, our environment and ecosystem up here, as well as water supply, but also look at statewide needs as well. So, you know, from the beginning, you know, we wanted to make sure that there was a process publicly for public and also locals to participate in the project. As we've gone through it, and most recently, some of this value planning process, we really, again, looked at some of the input that we'd received from locals, regions, and even our own investors who are investing in the project to say, you know, what project really works for us, for the environment, and then what project is viable? And I think we looked at that from the standpoint of, you know, what can we actually build? What operates or works in the current physical regime of, you know, river streams? What can we get permitted? And then, what are the facilities look like to basically meet all those other requirements? And then, what's the cost? So, we went through this value planning process. Jerry mentioned this earlier about right sizing the project in order to have a project that we thought was viable to meet all those requirements. So, it currently is a process we've just completed. We envision rolling that up into a future environmental document, which Ally can speak to under the environmental permitting bullet. But, you know, as we look at it now, you know, we're interested in what others may think of our current layout for the project and the processing of that. And then, using that input from others, you know, if we need to continue to sort of reformulate or change what that plan looks like, that process, we're certainly willing to do it. You know, again, I think our goal is to get to a project that we think is viable, you know, one that we can build, one that we can get permitted, one that provides benefits to the environment, benefits to water users, and that is financially viable. So, you know, we welcome, you know, we had a webinar yesterday, we're having this one today, a workshop. So, we value and solicit input as it relates to this value planning process that we've gone through. And then, to your second question, I think, again, it does speak to, you know, sort of, is this project buildable? Will it operate? I think that was our whole idea of the value planning process, so looking at a project that we ultimately believe can get permitted. And again, Ally will speak to some of the discussions we've had with some of the state folks, CDFW. folks, CDFW on permit and permit conditions. But looking at that, ultimately, we do think this is a project that can be built and will be built and operate in our, you know, statewide water infrastructure. As Jerry mentioned, we have, I think, come together through the value planning process that, in my mind, what a simpler project to think it is in terms of using existing facilities. The reservoir is kind of a naturally occurring basin with a couple of small dams. And then using existing infrastructure, Jeff says TCC canal to take water back out of the facility. So we really, I think, streamlined a lot of the physical footprint aspects of the project to, again, address permitability, buildability of the project, I should say. So, yeah, I think it has been a great process. And we certainly thank our investors in the project, folks, our members participating in this in the process. But it's not over. You know, I'd say we're, we've got through one process, but there's still, so, but Thad, I'll turn over to Jerry if he has additional comments, Sarah.
Jerry, I would ask if you could address part two of the question, which was, with the right-sized project changed, any thoughts on how the project's construction or the operations have changed?
Yeah, we've gone through and done a lot of work discussing permitability with various parties. And so we've definitely addressed some of the concerns folks had about diversion criteria and release criteria. You know, when you look at a project like this, you have investors on one side that need to get something out of their investments, some kind of return on investment, they're all reporting to their constituents. And on the other side, you've got to be very protective of the environment for good reasons. And, and so it's really a balancing act as far as trying to find the right place to be in terms of balancing the economics of the project with the fishery protection, just as an example. And I think that where we've landed in terms of the right sizing is definitely in a better spot than where we were. And I think we still have more work to do, and we will do that work as we go through the environmental review process because, of course, you know, there are things we need to consider further on both sides. And, and the objective here is to reach that optimum point when we come out of this at the end of the process next year so that we have something that we can actually afford, get permitted, and get built within a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you, Jerry. We do have a question in the chat room, and I'd like to ask both JP and Jerry to be on deck for that. So thank you, Gil, for joining us, the Director with the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. And I understand your General Manager Heather Dwyer may also be on the Town Hall lineup today. And the question is, may we have an initial budget for the cost of sites and an updated periodically and identify whom sources of revenue are from? So this sounds more holistically as it relates to costs and where the monies are coming from. So do you want to go with that first, Jerry?
Sure, yeah. Great question, Gil. And San Bernardino has been a very significant participant and definitely your representatives, Heather, Bob Tenscher, have done a great job of bringing your interest to the table and representing your interest. As far as the budget for the project goes, as I mentioned, at this stage with the value planning process, the total project estimate was in the range of three to 3.3 billion. We have, as part of that, as part of a value planning report that was produced to the board three months ago, there is a breakdown of all of those costs relative to, let's say, operations and maintenance, debt service, power generation, we still have inline conduit power generation, which is a small piece, but an offset to the O and M cost. And, and, and so that, that exists. It's a, it's on a global level right now because we still have to go through a process over the next 18 months to develop a plan of finance and to allocate costs to beneficiaries. We are operating under the beneficiary pays principle, so we want to make sure that everybody pays their fair share for the benefits that they're receiving, all of the participants. So that, that's a process we still have to go through to fine tune and allocate out exactly who is responsible for what costs. So that's, that's one of the next steps that will be occurring over the next 18 months. We certainly encourage the reservoir, all Reservoir Committee members to participate and to ensure that all of their constituents are represented properly. As far as sources of revenue, primarily, the sources of revenue are going to be generated through likely water service contracts with each individual participant. Right now, the sources of revenue are local dollars and state dollars. We have not assumed any federal participation, no federal direct participation at this time in the finances, although the door is open to that participation if it should come to pass. And we are working with the Bureau of Reclamation to try to make that a reality, but that takes time, and so we'll work through that in the next 18 months. There are two federal loans that are identified, a WIFIA loan, which I mentioned earlier, and a USDA loan, which are assumed, those are both federal, federally issued loans. All of the other borrowings and financings are assumed to be through bank financings that would occur as a result of revenue obligation bonds. So that is primarily the sources of revenue to pay the debt service. And, and then as far as operating costs, those would be assessed as the project operates and would be allocated, again, according to the beneficiaries.
Thank you, Jerry. JP, do you have anything to add to that?
That was a great summary of what's in the value planning report. I think that's, that's a great resource. In the near term, back in April, the, the Board and Reservoir Committee did adopt a work plan that gets through the end of 2021. And within that plan, we have state and federal and local funds kind of outlined. So that's just kind of answering in the near term.
Okay, thank you, JP. So seeing no other questions in the chat, and in true transparency, I think we're having some audio, some visual issues on this end. So if somebody is trying to call in and it's not showing up, please try again, but you can hear us. Let's turn to the area of the environment and permitting because we received a handful of questions in that area. So I would like to have both Ally Foresight and Thad Betner on deck for these questions. So one question is, how have you changed the diversion criteria for diversion of Sites water?
Sure, thanks, Sarah. This is Ally, and I, I'm also having some notices on my end saying that I'm having low bandwidth, so you may not be able to see me, but hopefully you can hear me. And I just want to, in terms of diversion criteria, we recognize that there were a number of concerns with the diversion criteria in the draft environmental document that was released for public review in 2017. Throughout the last year, we've really worked extensively with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to revise those criteria. So working to make those criteria much more protective of fish, both in the Sacramento River system, but also in the Delta and for Delta outflow conditions. So we're currently looking at higher bypass flows in the Sacramento River than we previously had in the 2017 document. And we're also considering a number of downstream diversion triggers. So these would be things that would allow us to divert or require that we stop diverting based on flows moving into the Yolo Bypass through the new Fremont Weir Notch, even into the Sutter Bypass or potentially as flows are down in the Delta ecosystem and looking at Delta outflow. We haven't finalized our criteria. We continue to work on those. What we're doing is we have a series of, I'll say, draft criteria that we're testing through the modeling system, testing through the lifecycle model, want to see what these criteria do to fish and what are the resulting effects to fish, and then making tweaks to the criteria to really balance, as Jerry and Thad talked about, balance the, you know, the need to build the project and actually be able to divert water and make it, make it work versus making sure that we're being protective of fish. So a lot of work going on there to look at all of these draft criteria in terms of the modeling and effects to species. And we do and will continue to work collaboratively with CDFW, with the National Marine Fishery Service, and with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service throughout this effort. So we want to make sure that we're getting early buy-in and input from the agencies as we work to finalize our diversion criteria.
Thank you, Ally. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
That's terrific because on my screen, it tells me I'm no longer connected to the meeting, so that's a good thing. Okay, so I had, I had somebody text me, and there is a question in the chat room which reads as follows, what different delivery methods are being considered for construction? Are there construction delivery methods that are being excluded? And I would ask Jerry to at least start that.
Yeah, I can, I can address that question. That is a very important question and something, a project of this size and a project of this urgency, it is certainly something that we'll need to consider. There have been consultations in the past as it relates to alternative delivery methods. I do not believe that any specific direction has been decided on by the board or even alternatives reviewed with the board. I could be wrong about that, but, but at some point, and I would say that point probably occurs closer to the end of next year, there would need to be some evaluation of that. All the things that we've done so far as far as the value planning report likely presume a traditional design, bid, build, delivery method. Certainly, there has been no specific discussion about the operations. That's, that's another area for consideration. However, at this time, all of the assumptions, again, have been very general and global to the level that there's been no decisions made.
Thank you so much, Jerry.
Hey, Jerry, or Sarah, pardon, sorry to interrupt there. Jeff Sutton here, a quick note as well, our, the Assemblyman from our, James Gallagher, sponsor 82551, that also provides for more legal opportunities for pursuing these design, build-type opportunities. So I think that was worth mentioning as well.
Thanks, Jeff. Yes, that's, that's good insight and good background. So again, if there are any questions, given that we do not have a view of the chat room, please either speak up or forever hold your peace. Moving right along, again, more questions in the area of the environment and permitting. I guess I would ask both Thad as well as Ally on the question, how will decisions be made on the use and benefits of the environmental water being secured for Prop 1? Ally, you want to start?
Actually, I was going to kick that to Thad to see if he wanted to start on that one.
Yeah, I could start that. In, in, you know, Jerry, I'm sure would want to have some input as well. You know, I think one of the exciting things about kind of this phase where we are in the project is, you know, Ally mentioned that we had or have been talking with CDFW about just getting the project permitted. And certainly, they have been looking at it from the standpoint of ensuring the project, you know, won't impact fish, you know, getting primarily in the Sacramento River. So the other exciting aspect is, you know, now we're actually having the conversations with CDFW about how to use a block of water that's dedicated for the environment from the project. So, you know, in the WIFIA application, we included an analysis of how water could be used for the project or how water could be used from the project for environmental benefits. But, you know, I think we're now having a conversation with CDFW and reaching out to some of the NGOs, environmental folks about, well, how ultimately would you want to use this block of water? And the one thing that we're trying to also do, I should have mentioned in the value planning process, is making sure as we essentially put, put facilities online for the project that those facilities would be sized, would be able to be operated in order to address, you know, how ultimately a block of water may be managed for the environment. So we're right in the cusp of those sorts of conversations. And I think it's just a great conversation to be able to talk about and really encouraging about how can water be stored, you know, having, you know, and also as part of the project, that environmental block of water would be able to have access to storage so it can potentially carry over water in different years, again, to meet the different needs of the environment and species. So, you know, we welcome, again, I think if there's folks listening to this who are sitting and talking with us about their ideas or working through CDFW or with CDFW about how to do that, you know, again, I think it's very encouraging that we're at that point in this project to have that conversation.
Well, Thad, that's a great pivot to the next question that was submitted, which Ally, maybe you can tackle this. How do Sites plan to coordinate and collaborate with non-governmental organizations, enabling them to provide more detailed input?
Yeah, there's a lot going on this, this coming year. So we're really focusing on a number of activities, really centered around working on revising the environmental documents, so revising our EIR, EIS, and getting that out for public review again. And as part of that, it's important to us to make sure that we're coordinating and collaborating with stakeholders, with landowners, with the NGO community out there. We have this unique opportunity to take all that we've learned about Sites over decades, but also all that we learned from the 2017 document and the comments on those 2017, on the 2017 document, and reshape the project itself, but also reshape the analysis to better address those concerns and comments that were out there and to see how we can make the project better for everybody. So there's, of course, our traditional ways under CEQA and NEPA in terms of public review process, and once we release the document for public review, there's opportunities there. But we want to go beyond those traditional ways. Those are great, but they're very kind of formal and they only allow input at certain time periods. So we've gone back and reviewed all the comments on the 2017 document to really understand the thought of the commenters, those portions of the project that they were excited about, those portions of the project that they had some concerns and challenges with. We're taking out, taking all of those to heart, and we've also started reaching out to a number of stakeholders, commenters, non-governmental organizations to hear from them. So it's, it's great to have the comments in writing, but at times, there, most of the time, it's good to have a dialogue and better understand those comments, but also be able to explore, you know, could we address the comment in this way or was your concern about that? And we can do this in response, and that would address it. So it's, that dialogue is important to us. So as we go through developing the environmental document, the revised environmental document, we will continue that outreach and coordination with folks. So if we've chatted with you already, know that we'll come back again. We will be back. You have not gotten rid of us. But for those folks that, that would like to talk with us and share their thoughts with us, please don't hesitate to reach out to Jerry, to myself, to anybody on the team. We're more than happy to meet, to collaborate, to share ideas and talk through concerns and see where we can work to address these issues.
Thank you, Ally. One more question in the area of the environment. There's been some inquiries as to what kind of modeling is being done either by Sites or by the state or perhaps collaboratively as it relates to the value planning changes and edits and how that complements the governor's concerns with climate change.
Yeah, absolutely. So there was a good amount of modeling done as part of our WIFIA application with regard to climate change. to climate change. And so, in that WISIP application, we looked at different, as was required through the application process for WISIP, we looked at different climate change scenarios into the future, so how might the climate change as we progress 10, 20, 30, 40-plus years from now, and completed modeling as part of that. And as that, as demonstrated in that modeling, sites performs better under future climate change scenarios. So, right now, in the SAC Valley, it's generally a rainfall-driven system. In the Sacramento Valley, there's still a decent amount of snowpack at higher elevations, but it's, the vast majority is a rainfall-driven system in the Sacramento Valley. And that rainfall generally comes in the early spring, so February, March, April, May timeframe, really kind of February, March, April is the focus of that. With future climate change scenarios, we expect probably about a similar amount of rainfall, just shifting it forward and coming in much shorter bursts. So, we take that rainfall over a number of months, and we push it earlier into the year, December, January, February, and we tighten up that timeframe and when it comes. And in those scenarios, with, especially with a lot of the systems in the SAC Valley that aren't dammed and aren't regulated, we're going to see that water come down really fast into the system in these short bursts. And in that situation, sites does perform better in those future climate change scenarios. So, we have the ability to come on quickly and pull that really high flow, some of that really high flow off the Sacramento River system, store it in sites, and then be able to use it in subsequent dry-year conditions. It is important to note that sites is really diverting water off the Sacramento River system that's coming in below Shasta Reservoir. So, it's those unregulated tributaries that we consider, in the hydrology world, flashy, meaning they kind of come on with a lot of flow in response to rainfall, and then they come back off, or they drop down quite a bit. Sites is really diverting those flows off of those unregulated systems below Shasta. We'll have the opportunity to divert water that's released from Shasta in flood-flow conditions, but this is more when Shasta's, you know, releasing in those really high, you know, 25,000 CFS-plus situations. We're not, we won't be relying on regular releases out of Shasta that is that Central Valley Project water, that's already accounted for under the senior water rights of the CBP. So, overall, there was a good amount of modeling done under the WISIP application, and we will actually continue to refine that, and look at that again in our cumulative impact analysis, and our climate change analysis in the environmental document. But we do, we do expect a similar trend, even with the changes in the project. We expect a similar trend, that sites will continue to perform well, and even better in future climate change scenarios.
Wow, I hope there's not a test on that. That's a lot of information. Thank you, Ally. Appreciate that very much. If there are any questions in the specific area of environmental or permitting issues, which, we'll take it any time, I'll go ahead and move on to our other pre-submitted questions, which is in the area of cost funding and affordability. So, again, both Jerry Brown and JP Robinett on deck for these two. Question, "What federal involvement is assumed in the cost per acre foot, and could additional federal involvement ultimately reduce the future repayment costs?"
I'll get it started, and then drop it off to JP for further information, but the, as I said earlier, the assumption is no federal investment at this stage. That's a conservative assumption. However, the window continues to be open, and the opportunity is there. We think there are significant benefits to federal participation in the project, and we welcome it, but we have not made any assumptions about it coming to pass. Maybe JP could talk a little bit about the finances and how they're arranged with and without the federal government participation. JP?
Yeah, thank you, Jerry. A big part of the recent value planning exercise was looking at the affordability of the project, and the federal role was certainly discussed at length. And an important thing to remember is, while we're not looking at an investment through Win Act or anything in the value planning exercise, the federal low-interest loans such as WIFIA that were looked at have a significant impact on the affordability of the project. And so, that's a very important part of our federal partnership moving forward, and something we want to continue to pursue.
Thank you, JP. We have one more question in the area of cost and funding, so either one of you or both. Is there an opportunity to get additional money from the state under Prop 1 as other projects slow down, or perhaps fall out of the program?
You know, we've always, all of the storage projects, there's eight of them, that the Prop 1 California Water Commission made decisions to fund, and all of the projects are in different status and states of progress. There was actually an update today to the commission, if you want to go back and look at their agenda and their stream today of their meeting, so it's a really good summary of each project's progress. But, overall, we, I don't remember what the exact numbers were, but we were, when we were finally awarded a conditional amount from the commission, there was some payment for benefits that was left on the table. So, there's a potential there. However, we are not actively engaged in clawing any funds from any of the other projects. We're not interested in necessarily competing in that way, and it would be up to the Water Commission to decide if that's something they want to pursue or not. We certainly are confident that even with the rightsizing that we've done, we're able to have a justification for the benefits that have been determined to be investable, and we will, we will seek to get recognition as we go forward for the additional benefits that we have relative to the rightsized project.
Thank you, Jerry. If there are no other specific questions right now on cost, funding, and affordability, we'll move on to the category of project participation. And I'd like to start with a question that was asked, on what are the benefits that can be realized for investors or future participants by agencies that are located south of the Delta? And in looking at the participant lineup, I know that we have Jeff Davis, who introduced himself initially. I'd ask him to go first, and then I know we have folks on from San Bernardino, I believe, both the general manager as well as a board member. And then, finally, I'm hoping I was accurate in the 925 numbers, and seeing folks from the Zone 7 region. So, if we could start with Jeff Davis, and if you could share why your agency is an investor and a participant in sites.
Sure, Sarah, I'd be happy to. So, we are a state water contractor. We get most of our water from the State Water Project. A number of other sites, investors in Southern California are in a similar situation, and probably most, if not all, the people on the call today recognize that the State Water Project has lost a lot of reliability over the last couple of decades. We're paying for a certain amount of water, and we're getting an average of about 60% of that. So, we're not really getting a good bang for our buck for that State Water Project. And Southern California is still growing, there's, at least our area is, there's a shortage of housing, and so, we're in Riverside County, what we see is people moving out to our service area, not from outside of the state, but from Los Angeles County, or Orange County, or San Bernardino County, to find more affordable housing, to either buy their initial home, or to perhaps buy a bigger home. And so, we need more water, and we're not getting it from the State Water Project. So, our board looked around a number of different places for water supplies, and identified Sites Reservoir as a really wonderful opportunity for us to augment not only our average-year water supplies, but in particular, our dry-year supplies. And this is where we, as an agency, have been very weak in the past, because in 2014 and 2015, when there was very little water on the State Water Project, we just couldn't meet the needs of our customers at all. So, Sites really helps us from a perspective of providing more water on an average annual basis, but also in particular, more for dry years. As I mentioned, there's a housing shortage, and so, our area in particular is still growing, and I think that San Bernardino would say that as well. We also are very active in implementing SIGMA within our service area. We are charged with making sure that the local groundwater basins in our service area do not go dry, and Sites is just another source to be able to enable us to comply with SIGMA. There's been a lot of overdraft in our groundwater basins in the past. We've gotten that under control a little bit over the last few years, but Sites will ensure that we'll be able to keep up with that and maintain sustainability in our groundwater basins as required by SIGMA for the long term. Also, from an affordability standpoint, Sites really provides a good opportunity for us. We are an urban agency, not an ag agency, and so, we do have a little bit of tax base that we can use, you know, to help find additional water supplies. And the cost per acre foot of the Sites water, even with losses through the Delta, is very comparable to what we're paying on the State Water Project. So, price-wise, protection of groundwater-wise, providing housing to people who want to move to our service area-wise, dry-year yield-wise, all those are great reasons why our board has decided they want to invest in Sites. And just, it's a project that's more likely to get built because of the environmental component. The environmental component is great by itself, but just the fact that makes it more likely to get built means that there's a little bit less risk involved in this investment than perhaps in other investments into water supplies.
Thank you, Jeff, and appreciate your leadership on the Reservoir Committee. Staying in Southern California, Heather Dwyer, General Manager for San Bernardino Valley, are you on the line?
I am here. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you so much. Maybe you can help answer the question on what benefits can be realized for participation by agencies south of the Delta?
Yeah, thank you. I would love to do that. So, very much like Jeff said, you know, we have a growing region, we have decreased reliability of the State Water Project, but at the top of at least Valley District's mind as well, is the threat of climate change on our water supply reliability, the resiliency of our system, and overall sustainability. And that's a, you know, that is a realistic future that we are having to deal with, of, you know, increased long-term droughts, you know, atmospheric rivers that dump all the rain in one particular timeframe. And so, this is a way that we can augment our water portfolio, planning for future climate change, and how do we make sure that we have that reliable diversified portfolio. Additionally, which is kind of maybe we have a little bit different perspective as well, because I am actually a former endangered species fisheries biologist, so I have a really good understanding of how endangered species issues affect the ability for all projects to be built and operate in California. And so, I really understand that the more you can do by building projects like this that have a really significant environmental benefit, that increase the baseline status of endangered species, especially fisheries species, that in the long term will help all of the state water contractors and all of the users of water resources in the state of California really be able to do our jobs easier. The reality is, the more salmonids we have in the system, the more smelt, the more a complex and functioning ecosystem that we have in the Delta and the Sacramento region, the better off we all are, no matter where we're located in the state. And Sites Reservoir, more than any other project that I've worked on in my career, has this opportunity to basically turn this water resource into a tool that the wildlife agencies can use to better manage their species. And I used to be a federal regulator for fisheries, and no one ever said, "Here, we will give you water. Tell us how you want it managed for the benefit of the species that you're trying to recover." That's a huge win for the wildlife agencies and the fish species that we're talking about. And so, unlike any other project, Sites Reservoir just has the ability to become a partner with the wildlife agencies, with the fisheries agencies, to help recover species that then in turn helps all of the residents of California, because it helps us get our water supply in a way that has less impact and more benefit for, you know, all the aquatic ecosystems of the state. So, those are my two biggest reasons to be participating, but I do have one or two board members who might want to jump in. We are very supportive of this project, because it is unlike any other water project that you've probably heard about in the state of California, and so, we really want to support it and make sure that it happens.
Are there any San Bernardino board members that would like to speak at this time?
Sure. This is Milford Harrison. I'm president of the Board of San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, and I am just as high as you can possibly be in support of this project. And to me, it offers such a wide range of value, not only to us in ensuring more water, but also what it offers to the farmers, the agricultural interests, the environmental interests. It's just, it's just such an all-encompassing project, that it just seems like to me that this is a wonderful place to put our investment. And they're just, our director, Heather, is, as she just spoke, is really on top of this, and we have, she has our full support as we move ahead with this Sites project, and we appreciate all that all of you are doing, and we look forward to putting our full investment into this because of the incredible benefits that it offers, not only to us, but the environment and all of the other entities involved in the state. Thank you.
Hey, Sarah.
Yes?
I might interject. Hey, so, when we talk about project participation, you know, everyone kind of thinks about the environment as, oh, by the way, the environment, well, the environment is one of the participants in this project. And as Heather just pointed out, and Thad and Ally spoke to earlier, this block of water that's going to be used for the environment is, the concept is something new for California. It's never been done before. And so, we're going to have to put together a team of people to develop goals for this water, and to actually actively manage it as time goes forward. So, Jerry, as mentioned earlier, he'd been reaching out to some of the NGO folks. We need people to participate in these discussions, and to dedicate a person or two to stay committed and follow this through until we have an organization set up with California Department Official Wildlife for the management of this water. So, it's a huge opportunity to see some water do some good things, but it's also a responsibility, and it's going to take some work. Thank you.
Thank you, Fritz. Is there anyone else from San Bernardino? And if not...
Yeah, it's Gil Navarro again. Thank you.
Sure.
I want to echo everything that our President Harrison says, along with Heather. But, you know, Valley District has an obligation to ensure there's water in our district for the community, and so, this is going to help us make that commitment 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Are there any other investors from Southern California that would like to comment at this time about the benefits of Sites Reservoir for your agency? And if not, then I'd like to see if there's anyone in the Bay Area. I understood that we might have some board members on today from Zone 7. Is Sandy, is Sandy Figgers on the call?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, although I would ask somebody to mute their phone. It sounds like somebody's doing some dishes.
No.
But, thank you, Sandy. Sandy, it's all you.
Hello?
Sandy, we're here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh...
I've been listening to this and there's lots and lots of details that go into a project at this size and it's going to be reading, running into all kinds of various roadblocks, but I, it needs to be finished off. I, I'm Chairman of the Board of Zone 7, and I consider this one of the categories that I would be derelict in my duties as a board member not to get involved with this project. It's the only new water coming down and other people have been talking about all the other good things for that. And I wholeheartedly support this project, knowing that it's going to be costly, but the alternative is not thinkable.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else from Zone 7?
Yes, this is Sarah Palmer. Can you hear me?
We can, Sarah, thank you, it's all yours.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the Board of Directors as well, and, and I've been following this project for a while. And it, again, as Sandy mentioned, it is the only source of new water we have. We also are heading into build out and this helps us to, to meet those needs of build out. We also manage our groundwater basin and, and manage that groundwater basin is going to be important to have many different parts of a portfolio. And sites is definitely part, should be part of that portfolio. So we, we are standing behind that one. Also because, I believe as already mentioned, the, the environmental needs are there in terms of managing fisheries and, and even though that, that isn't affecting Zone 7 directly, it's certainly something that we all need to be, to be concerned with. So we do see sites reservoirs complementing our, our Zone 7 water supply, making it more reliable, being part of our overall portfolio and being a significant resource. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah. So another question that had come in that we hadn't addressed yet was actually the governor's portfolio and Sarah just used the terminology, complementing our portfolio. Jerry, maybe you can elaborate on specifically how the sites reservoir?
I'm taking a break, if you'd like to take a break.
Okay, if we can make sure everyone's on mute, that would be terrific. So the question, Jerry, how does sites reservoir specifically fit into the governor's water resilience portfolio?
Thank you, thank you for that question. When you think of resiliency, you have to consider things like being there when you're going to need it and being available during extreme conditions. And having a lot of uncertainty and creating flexibility to be adaptable.
Oh, that's what happened.
For the circumstances. And, and I think that, that's definitely what the, the governor's portfolio is looking at. I've heard that the portfolio, while it's in draft, I believe Nancy Vogel mentioned a couple of weeks ago that it was, would be coming out here very soon. And, and it does recognize the need for increased storage. And the sites reservoir project was one of the projects that were specifically named as providing that necessary flexibility, resiliency, reliability for our, our water system going forward. Doesn't mean that, you know, it's a done deal, it just means that we, we, we are in a high need and it is one of the ways that we could address the needs that we have as a state. This project benefits all of California. And while we have various investors, it's definitely recognized that when you add a facility of this nature, that the, the flexibility that you create is beneficial to everyone throughout the state, which is part of the recognition for the Prop 1 dollars and part of the recognition too from the WIN Act funds, if, if they should pass, to be invested in the project.
Thank you, Jerry. Under the area of project participation, there are a couple of other questions that were asked, and I'm going to ask our Board Chair Fritz Durs to take this first. We've continued to use the term beneficiary pays, but I'm not quite sure that's a, a term that everyone's quite familiar with. So Fritz, if you could elaborate on that and then also again articulate the role that the state of California is participating in the project and what they will receive from that.
Sure, thank you, Sarah. Yeah, so one of the principles that the Sites JPA Board has, has taken is beneficiary pays. When we first got the JPA established, there was a lot of talk of, of federal investment. And the board quickly recognized that federal investment, though it might, they might be worthy, it might take us decades to, to get Congress to allocate that money. So we went down the road of beneficiary pays. And the idea is that we're not going to ask the state of California or the federal government to subsidize our water. That's kind of water world from decades ago. And, but we also want this principle to stand for the environment as well. And we were able to work with Governor Brown and help with the sites, excuse me, Prop 1, the language there. And there was a block of money funding allocated for the environment. So in the case here, when, when Jerry Brown spoke of a block of environmental water, the state of California is going to pay for that. That block of water is dedicated to them, no one else can take it. It, it allows them to have a certain percentage of storage in the reservoir as well as outflow. And it's to be used whenever they would like. And that's where that board that I mentioned and, and guidelines for how to use that water are going to be really important in the future.
Thank you, Fritz. I'm just going to go ahead and read a comment that's in the chat room. That's from June Hayes from San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. June wants to also add that one of the great things about this project is its emphasis on the win-win for all and not just meeting the needs of any one interest group. Jim, thank you for that comment. And if you have anything else you want to add to that, that would be terrific. If not, I will go ahead and move on to the topic of schedule. And so the first pre-submitted question we had was, when will the investors start receiving water from their sites reservoir investment? So I'll give that to Jerry and then JP, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Right, so the, the, the construction period that I've mentioned is about seven years is the current estimate under the, again, the design bid, build, delivery method. It is extensive, mainly due to the amount of construction for the dam placement, the time of year that can be worked and, and all of the other accessory facilities and pumping stations that have to be constructed to make the system work together. As a dam project, essentially when you get to a place where you're got enough built up around the sides to contain water, there's a possibility that you might be able to proceed with filling the reservoir. So right now, the projection is to have the facility in operation in 2030. There might be some opportunities before that to get some early operations. We don't have any, we're not making any commitments to that. Certainly, it depends heavily on the hydrology of, of the situation. You know, back in 1997, when Los Peceros was constructed and it was finished that year, everybody thought it was going to take four years to fill. It was 100,000 acre foot reservoir, by the way. However, because 97 was a super wet year, it filled in about two months, much to everyone's surprise. So these things can happen. As Ally mentioned, these are very flashy watersheds and the, but, but from a planning standpoint and, and getting the benefits rolling, it's 2030 is what, what we're going with.
Thank you, Jerry. There are two other associated questions with schedule, but they actually have to do with both rightsizing of the project and critical permitting deadlines. And so Ally, I might ask you to opine on what are the critical permitting deadlines that you must meet in order to remain a viable project?
Critical permitting deadlines that we must meet? We must get our draft environmental documents revised and recirculated for, for public review. So to meet, continue to be eligible for WIPF funds, they have requirements that we have the draft environmental document out by the end of 2021. We're looking to beat that deadline and get it out about July of next year, as Jerry indicated. So about a year from now, we'd have that revised and recirculated out on the street for a public review. So in this next year, we're really going to be focusing on that environmental document to continue to, to move forward with our, our planning and permitting components. We're also going to be focused on four other key things. And I'll, I'll state those and then talk to you just a little bit. Our federal Endangered Species Act compliance, our federal Section 106, our cultural resources compliance, our state of California Endangered Species Act compliance, typically called an incidental take permit, and then our water right permit. So those are the four, with the environmental document makes five, but those are the, the key things that we'll be focused on this next year. Our federal EFA compliance and federal cultural resources compliance are important because they're big, they're big regulations or big laws that, that will govern how we construct and, and operate sites reservoir. But they're also necessary to finish, for reclamation to finish the NIPA component, the federal environmental planning component of the project. Our state EFA compliance, that state incidental take permit is important to us also because just like the federal EFA, it will govern quite a bit of our construction and our operations of the reservoir. So that's important to us to make sure that we, we get that covered and that we're addressing those issues early on and working with our state partners also. And then our water rate permit, of course, that's absolutely necessary for operations of sites reservoir, but it is, it can be an extensive process. We want to make sure that we get that going early. And that also helps us tee up a lot of discussion with downstream water right holders and making sure that they feel comfortable and confident that we're not going to be infringing on their senior water rights. So we see that as an important one to get going early, to give confidence to other folks in the SAC Valley and in the Delta, that we hear you, we understand you, and we respect your senior water rights.
Thank you, Ally. Jerry, this one's for you. With the rightsizing of the project and the associated delays, how might that jeopardize any of your state or federal funding?
Good question, because that's very critical for the affordability piece. State funding, as we mentioned, we're on track for meeting the Prop 1 requirements. It probably will mean that that final award, which requires certain contracts and permits and approvals to be executed before you get that final award, that probably, it probably means that comes about a year later than it otherwise would. And so in order for that to happen, we've relied on the early funding that the state has provided us along with local funding, and we'll have to continue to do that. But, but all, all, everything points to us meeting all of those requirements. So state funding is good. As far as federal funding is concerned, there's a fairly limited amount available under the WIN Act. We are currently in the process of working with the Bureau to finalize a federal feasibility report. That should be out by the end of the year, which is one of the conditions of WIN Act. And then there's another condition that relates to construction and that federal funding, the construction, it's yet to be defined what that actually means, but we're confident that we'll be able to meet that. I believe it's in 2023 sometime. So that corresponds with our construction start. And then finally, with regard to the federal loans that we're applying for, the USDA loan is already secured. And the WIPF alone is something that we're going to have to apply for likely next year and be in competition with all of the other projects throughout the country that are going to be seeking that beneficial financing. And we're developing our strategies on how best to attack that right now.
Thanks, Jerry. Fritz, I don't know if you have anything to add to that? Not hearing anything, okay, I'll move on ahead. We've got two more categories in our pre-submitted questions. And again, based upon time, if anybody has any other questions they want to ask or just maybe some discussion or clarifications or perhaps an epiphany, please raise, raise that within the chat room and we'd be happy to engage. So in the category of overall project benefits, and, and we've talked a bit about the statewide opportunities, but let's talk about what happens in the SAC Valley. I'd like to ask Jeff Sutton and Kevin Spessert on deck, if they could elaborate on how the project will provide flood protection, both for the Maxwell as well as the greater SAC Valley region?
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. There's multitude of benefits for the SAC Valley, you know, starting with water supply that we, you know, similar to what we heard from the folks in the southern portion of the state, there's needs here, I quickly mentioned, in 2014, 15, the 17 districts I serve on the west side of the Sacramento Valley where it is 0% allocation. So augmenting that supply, a lot of what is permanent crops and can't withstand elongated drought and can't be fallowed, so that's critical. And then, and then obviously the environmental benefits. But other, the other enumerated benefits that weren't Prop 1, that was overwhelmingly supported in the state legislature, I think there was only one no in the whole Senate Assembly and, and signed by the governor and, and then overwhelmingly supported by voters of the state of California, including those, those public benefits, the environmental, but also flood control and recreation along with the water supply benefits. And locally, kind of there's the local and regional benefits with the flood control. The sites reservoir will dam up, they're, they're, they're not active rivers or streams, but they're arroyos and waterways that run, can run very ferociously during, during times of inclement weather. And, and it's the, the Stone Corral and the Funks watershed that, that would be captured in sites reservoir protecting the local community of Maxwell in, in, oh, it was in 2017 and 2019, both, in particular 2017, the building we're sitting in here, the sites reservoir, Joint Powers Authority office was three feet underwater in the middle of the town of Maxwell. It still, people are still recovering from some of the impacts of that flood. It also did damage, not as great, but got very scary in 2019 as well. And it affected farms, agricultural infrastructure, our community here, transportation, Highway 99 and I-5. So it'll provide some, some significant local benefits to the communities of Williams and Maxwell. And then also, there's regional flood control benefits as well, will be, those are times when the river would be running high between Tamee Inclusive Canal and Bath Canal, Glen Inclusive Irrigation District's canal, would be pulling approximately 4,000 cubic feet per second off the river during that time and also blocking the contributions that could be from the two watersheds I mentioned previously, that can run as high as combined 25,000, 30,000 CFS. So that would wa, that's waters we'd be holding back during those critical times that, you know, is probably going to be measured in the river in, in several inches instead of feet. But, but when we're in that kind of situation, the clue space and drain and the, the river is, is, is putting pressure on those levees, those, those inches are significant and make a big difference to, to localized and regional flooding. So it would provide a significant benefit there as well. And then also I'd And then also, I'd mentioned recreational benefits. Several studies have been done. Great Valley Center did several that were funded by the California Resources Agency and trying to identify as our state, you know, starts moving from 40, close to 50 million people, increased recreational opportunities and having what would be, I believe, the seventh largest reservoir here in the state of California with dedicated recreational assets would provide significant increased recreational opportunities that would likewise provide a economic benefit to the region as well.
Jeff? No, great, Jeff. I think Jeff covered a lot of, a lot there. The only thing that I would add, well, number one is that the state invested, significantly invested under Prop 1 in the flood control benefits that sites project provides, as well as the recreation component, which were part of the state's investment in public benefits for the project. I think the other thing, being a born and raised here in the SAC Valley and living in the community of Maxwell, I think to me, a major benefit is the economic stimulus that a project like this will bring to an area of California that has traditionally dealt with pretty significant issues of unemployment, certainly above, generally above the unemployment rates around the state of California, and certainly some of the economic challenges that we faced here in the valley. A project like this brings a significant amount of economic stimulus to an area that has had, that has had challenges over the last several years. You know, when we look at, when we look at that, you know, the authority, ever since its founding in 2010, looking at ways to use this project as a benefit to the community, to the local region, we're going to be a part of this community for the next 100 years, and how do we develop a project that serves not just the state of California, but how can we look at the regional benefits that this project has? And when we look at it from the construction window of this project in the near term, the economic stimulus that this project can bring to the region, when we start looking at seven years of construction, as Jerry had talked about, trying to get to construction in 2030, the project create hundreds of near-term jobs through that construction. These are high-paying construction-related jobs over those seven years here in the region, and all the indirect jobs that are created during the construction of this project. And in that process, the authority's been working over the last several years with the California building and construction trades to develop strategies and programs to help us here in the SAC Valley develop the highly trained and dedicated workforce who could start working on this project when we start construction, try to keep those jobs locally, but also looking at ways to try to get our local businesses here, maybe more indirect than the construction trades, but the businesses who could flourish during the construction of this project, both near term and long term. Jeff talked a little bit about recreation, you know, when a project is built and operating, we'll have, in addition to the near-term construction jobs, we'll have many long-term jobs from the operations of the project, as well as the recreation component, which adds to the economy here in the region. And I think the last thing I would say, I think it was yesterday Jeff had mentioned, and I think it's a really good quote, is, you know, our farms here in our region are our factories. The Sacramento Valley's economy is run by the agricultural production and the service industries that serve ag here in our communities. And when ag is doing well, our communities do well. And when ag doesn't do well, our communities go into decay, local public services get harder and harder to deliver for our counties and our cities and our police departments and our fire departments. And so, having a reliable and resilient supply of water to keep our agricultural community and economy rolling greatly benefits us here in the SAC Valley and rural communities throughout California. You know, we here in the SAC Valley, in the San Joaquin Valley, in California in general, we provide the food that feeds our state, that feeds our nation, and feeds the world. And having a reliable and resilient supply of water to continue to move our agricultural production forward benefits our communities, it benefits our agricultural economy, our rural economy, and our ability to provide services through our local agencies to our residents and citizens here in the North State.
While both you and Jeff are available, I wanted to inquire as to what you're hearing from the state and federal elected officials that represent the Greater SAC Valley and their level of interest and involvement in sites reservoir?
I think because of the importance of water supply outlined by the statements that Kevin just made, we've seen significant support. You heard me mention earlier Assemblyman Gallagher's AB 2551 to allow for other ways to contractually deliver this project, to expedite providing these benefits. Both Mr. Gallagher and Senator Nielsen were both huge supporters and advocates for the WISIP chapter of Proposition 1 in its development back in 2014 and the Delta Reform Act in 2009 that led to this opportunity and continue to be supportive. Because of the critical nature and the benefits it's going to provide locally, regionally, and statewide, I, you know, the need for water storage and the opportunity to restore operational flexibility, the environmental benefits that this is going to provide, not just the, which is huge, the block of water and dedicated and something they can store up and for the environment sufferers, like our cities and our rural communities and farms during droughts and them having that opportunity, but then also the ability to get a synergy and an integrated operation that can really improve the ability to help problems in the Delta with water quality, fishery needs, cold water pool from Shasta Reservoir, can help meet some of those requirements to loosen the regulatory noose and make some of our previous investments in water infrastructure continue to, you know, kind of stop the erosion of those benefits as well. So, on the federal level, we've seen, which has been just wonderful, huge bipartisan support from Congressman Lamafa and Congressman Garmendi, working hand-in-hand and co-sponsoring legislation to make this reality. And then, and then that's our local folks here, but much broader, from congressional districts, I think it's 38 of the California congressional districts that this project touches, meaning water would go to investors within their region. And we've gotten letters, both from the state side and federal side, representing that breadth, almost the entire state of California, saying, this is an important project, this is why, you know, we've supported Prop 1, and this is something that, you know, it's, as Jerry said at the beginning, it's a 21st century solution to a problem that needs to become a reality.
Yeah, I think Jeff had hit it right on the head. The only thing I would add is more of an anecdote. Prior to my time working here on the sites project, I worked for a member of Congress who represented the SAC Valley, who worked this process through 20-plus years ago. And in my experience, and I think the actual number was closer to the mid-40s of congressional district or members of Congress who signed onto a letter in 2017 in support of our WISIP application. I've never seen in my career 43 members of the California delegation agree to anything, and it was a bipartisan list of people. Senator Feinstein has graciously been a supporter of this project and a champion of this project. And so, we have enjoyed a broad bipartisan enthusiastic amount of support from our elected officials, both at the state and federal level. And I would add also at the local level, we fortunately in this project, as part of our Board of Directors, also have the two counties who the project lies in, both Colusa and Glen County. The supervisor in Colusa County, whose district the project is in, is on our Board of Directors. He's been a champion for the project for many years and really a lion in working with our landowners and our local communities in working through the issues and potential impacts that the project can have on those stakeholders. And it worked tirelessly to advance this, but also to make sure that this community or this project works for the community. We, like I said, we're going to be a 100-year neighbor for the folks here in the Sacramento Valley. We want to make sure that as we develop this project, their concerns and their needs are part of that. Also, on the Glen County side, we have a supervisor representing us on the authority board, representing the county on the authority board. And that collaboration and coordination with the counties and all of the agencies and departments within those counties has really gotten our project moving forward with our local communities. Really, that feedback and that interaction has, I think, given us a better project. I think where we're at today is based on the feedback we've received from our local electives here at the county level, as well as state and federal, but also helping, being driven by our local landowners and our local government agencies, including local school districts, fire departments, the sheriff's departments, who are all weighing in and trying to help us develop a project that meets the needs of our project and our participants, but also the needs of the community.
Thank you very much, Kevin and Jeff. I do not have any additional pre-submitted questions, so what I would like to do is ask if there is anyone on the phone that would like to ask a question or make a comment or contribute to the discussion before we ask Fritz and Jerry for closing remarks. Hearing none, I will then ask Jerry to make some closing remarks, followed by our sites JPA Board Chairman Fritz Durst.
I would just close with a couple of comments. First, I hear a lot of feedback on the project about the affordability, and I understand that. I understand that $600 an acre foot for some is on the expensive side, $600 an acre foot, again, delivered to the river, is on the lower end. So, we have this diverse set of folks that are participating, and we need to ensure that as we go forward, that we maintain affordability for all of our partners. But I would just remind folks and ask you to think about, you know, when was the last time that you ever looked back in the history books and looked at a water project and where there wasn't concerns or expressions of concern about how expensive the project was? And then, think to yourself about what that project means to us now and where we would be today without it. I highlight that because it's really a 100-year project, you know? We're dealing with COVID right now, and it is significant, and it is, and it will be impactful on our community and our economy for a period of time, but this will pass. We have an opportunity here to build a century-plus facility that will, I think, folks, our future generations will look back and say, gosh, I'm glad that got built. So, I think, you know, that's one thing. The other thing that I hear a lot about is, what's taking so long? How come this thing isn't built right now, and why isn't it done? Well, my short answer to that is if it was easy, it would be done. But the other answer is that these things take time, and we have to go through a process and a way that allows everyone to be a participant. We need to work to understand everybody's needs and issues and try to address them as we go forward and modify and adjust as we go forward. So, this is part of the process, and we are making our way through the process. I am really excited about where we are, the new direction that we're headed in with the rightsizing, and the focus that we have on achieving the deliverables that are necessary to make some really big decisions about funding and financing in the near future. And so, we are on the right track. We are on a path to deliver this vital project to the people of California, the investors in the project, and to do it in a way that it is beneficial and supported by the local community. So, I thank you for your participation. It's great to see people interested in water projects and interested enough to be on the line and to be engaged in the discussion, and we look forward and are open to continued discussion as we progress. Thank you.
Hey, this is Fritz, and I would really like to echo what Jerry just said there. I want to thank everyone for their time today to listen, to be informed. I think the foundation for any good discussion, to make a decision to move forward, has to be have good information and a good understanding of the process. We're, right now, in going into Phase 2 of this project, we have several more phases to go through. The project's going to grow, and we're going to need everyone's input to move forward. And again, I thank you so much. I often say that, you know, good information leads to good questions and good decisions. So, let's continue this. The JPA and the Reservoir Committee are actually going to begin strategic planning here in August, and I think that's going to be an important path as we move forward here. So, I thank you so much for joining us today, and there'll be more of these in the future. I actually like these WebEx meetings. I think it gives people opportunities to participate who can't necessarily make it up to the community of Maxwell. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it back to you, Sarah.
Fritz and Jerry, thank you both very, very much. And again, we appreciate greatly individuals taking time from their busy days in this new virtual world that we're all endeavoring to navigate. Again, the meeting will be recorded, and it will be placed on our website later this week or early next week. We welcome future engagement opportunities, both virtually and hopefully in the not-so-distant future, in person. Please check out our website if you have more questions, and we wish you all the very best, and please stay safe. Thank you so much.
Hey, Sarah. Sarah, I would, I remiss, I needed to thank you, Sarah Katz and Sarah Rosoto, for helping us here put together this presentation. Aaron Haydinger has been very instrumental in working with the WebEx meeting itself. You guys have helped make this very successful. Thank you so much.
It's our pleasure, Fritz. Thank you.
Okay, meeting adjourned.